I remember two years ago when Mr. Bruce Hoss was running for an office, we had him in our potluck. And he told us that he had, was going to do something like this. And you know, I think we have so many politicians who tell you what's going to happen if they get elected. He didn't get elected and it did it. So if he hadn't, if he hadn't got elected, he might have did bigger things. So next time he runs for office, let's elect him and see what he will do.
Welcome to Oregon Voters Digest, the program that brings forward the social and political issues that are important to people living here in the Pacific Northwest. And now your host, Bruce Broussard.
Welcome again to this segment of Oregon Voters Digest. I'm Bruce Broussard, your host. Well, folks, we're here. It's here. Campaign is on here in the state of Oregon, here in Portland, Oregon. From a national perspective, we're going to set that aside, especially during our campaign. We've got some issues that we have to deal with here within our own state. I mean, we're going to, as the old saying goes, we're going to make Oregon great again. And we're going to start here in the Portland metropolitan area. We're going to naturally begin interviewing candidates that are running for office, whether it be city council, Multnomah County, just on and on and on. But primarily, we're going to spend our time here in this particular area. And then we're going to be bringing on the gubernatorial races and things of that nature, senatorial, whatever's necessary. But we welcome, and like I said, and then what I thought I'd do right off the bat is that I thought I'd bring in another individual here who's very, very acquainted with the issues here in the local community, also state, but more specifically here in the Portland metropolitan area. As you know, it's in the county for that matter. The county is the largest county of the 36 here in the state of Oregon. And there are some major, major issues here. And actually, it sort of involves also the city of Portland, Oregon. And we've got some major, major issues here too. Homelessness, housing, a lot of things. But anyway, I've got someone here that's going to be an asset and contribute, if you will, to the discussion so that you can get a better feel of what the issues are and the kinds of leadership that we're in need of and the leadership that are going to be running. Very, very important, okay? I've got Fred Stewart with me. How you doing, Fred?
Pretty good, Bruce. How are you doing?
Great, 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 great. And you've seen Fred before. Fred, in fact, I was, I was looking at Fred running for city council this time around for the city of Portland, but I'm going to deal with, but to my, as far as I'm concerned, it's benefiting Oregon Voters Digest because he's going to be running here. He's going to be interviewing all the issues that he ordinarily, he would be talking to on the campaign trail. So we're going to, we're just fortunate to have him here. And we're still encouraging him to run, if you will, okay? And then, and then the second half hour, we're going to probably, maybe a candidate might come on and we're just going to go on and interview that candidate when they come on on the second half hour. We'll take a break and do that. It seems as though somebody just walked into the door. I mean, she's fierce as ever too, boy. She's working all the time. Sharon, Sharon, okay? So what we'll do now is that let's, let's start off with, let's start off with some of the dates that you, I'm sure you're familiar with. March 8th, 2018 voters pamphlet filing deadline for metro and Multnomah County candidates. That's gone by. March 30th, 2018 military and overseas ballots mailed. Okay, on April 24th, 2018 voter registration deadline. So get that, hey, if you want to vote, you want to get involved in this campaign, make sure you, you vote, not only in the campaign, but get out and vote, okay? Remember that date, April 24th. And then on April 25th, the ballots are mailed. The ballots are mailed. You're going to probably see all sorts of people knocking on your doors, trying to get that attention and whatever. But again, that's April 25th, the ballots will be mailed. And then May 15th is going to be election day. May 15th will be election day. Drop-off sites open, 8:00 PM. All 36 county election officers in the state of Oregon open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on election day. And then we'll get those results and everybody will be looking at the tube. Okay, Fred, what do you think? What does this race look like today? What do you think about it?
Very interesting. We've got something I like seeing. We've got a lot more minorities running.
Okay.
Um, we got a lot of people, there's quite a few of these people that would normally not run. I like that we've got some, some people who are beginning to step out. I hope the next time, the next go-around, we have even more. And I'm always telling people that want to contribute to their community, instead of just sitting around and complaining, get involved in somebody's campaign or more, or better yet, run themselves. Because friends, I can assure you, the absolute best people in the market are not the people who are elected and they're not the people who are running for office. We need a, as they say, a regime change in our choices. And there's a lot of very good people out there, very smart people, very experienced people, who just don't run. And they, a lot of them don't understand how important it is, especially with a sophisticated community like Portland, pragmatic community like Portland, that people with their skills run.
Well, yeah, and the other thing too, what about the area itself? I mean, as far as the voters are concerned. I mean, our area's changed quite a bit. We've got people moving in every day.
And it's going to change a lot more.
Oh my God. I mean, we've got development sprinkling out all over the place.
Development's slowing down, at least for residential. I mean, Chloe Daley's done an excellent job at basically making it harder on every renter in Portland. As a matter of fact, I think she-
Why was that?
Well, all this rent control stuff, rent stabilization stuff, that alone hurt. But now we've got rising interest rates and we've got higher costs for labor because it's so hard to get the skilled labor at an affordable price. I mean, they're in high demand. So where seven or eight years ago, you could get a bunch of guys to work for you for 10, 12 bucks an hour, now you're paying 20, 30 bucks an hour. You know, like I tell everybody, everybody wants to get paid. You know what I mean?
You gotta eat.
That guy that's doing the hammering, putting the nails in on that building, he doesn't care that the $30 an hour he wants to hammer that, that those nails in is raising the cost of housing.
Yes, yes.
He wants, he's got a family. He's got a woman. He's got kids. He's got bills to pay. He is like, hey, pay me.
That's right.
Or I will go to the housing project that will pay me, you know? And we've got a West Coast shortage on, on trade jobs when it comes to plumbing, electrical, carpentry, and the apprentices that follow in those guys. You know, so we got a shortage at journeyman level and a definite shortage at the apprentice level. So, you know, and then the other thing that's hit us this year, like I predicted last year, is the materials to build housing has gone up quite a bit. And some items have gone up only 2% or 3%, you know how it goes. Some items have gone up 100%. And then, you know, so I'd say the average is probably 10% or 15% is what we've seen just because we had so much going on last year. We had the fires, especially in Montana and stuff, that burned so much timber. Then we had, you know, two major hurricanes and about 15 or 20 tornadoes. I mean, we, we had some of the worst tornado damage last year in the Midwest we've ever seen. So, you know, so the rebuilding process along with the demand nationwide for, for, you know, building new housing. And then Chloe comes to Portland, you know? I try not to say a whole lot about Chloe because I don't want people to think it's, it's sour grapes. But then again-
City council.
But then again, I want, I want people to understand that a lot of this stuff that's coming to fruition in the year 2019, 2020, my friends that have families that are going to need housing to live in as far as rental housing, single-family housing, townhouses, I hope your income goes up quite a bit over the next 12 months. Because we're not building that many houses right now. We're def, we're not building any rental, single-family housing in the Portland market. No single-family housing is being built for rentals. We've got a housing shortage that's getting worse. And those of you who are in fixed incomes, you know, you're not making, you know, city commissioner money, you know? Those of you who are retired and on fixed incomes, and those of you who need three and four bedrooms, homes to live in for your family, for your wife, your husband, your kids, you're going to, you're going to find it very difficult when you look for new housing next year. It's going to be twice as hard as it is this year.
Wow, wow.
And, you know, it's, it's sad. It could have been avoided. Right now, there's nothing the city council can do other than, I don't know what they can do. There's nothing they can do to, to stop it, you know, at all. It's going to be bad. And, you know, it didn't have to be this way, but the developers, not developers, but the real estate owners of Portland, you're going to have a great year. If you own real estate already, especially rental properties, this is going to be the exact opposite of 10 years ago. So if you've been in the real estate game, rental game for, you know, for a long time, 10 years or more, 2018 toward the end of the year, 2019, it's going to be shock and awe good for you. But our friends that rent, especially like I said, our friends that are, that are on fixed incomes, it's going to hurt.
Tough deal. Okay, okay. So housing, as you can see, housing is going to be one of our major, major, major issues, as Fred indicated, and naturally right into the election year. So consequently, that's going to be a main situation as far as what the voters should be looking for in the electorate.
Well, they, they're going to need people, they're going to need people who have skills, not so much in real estate. I mean, having skills in real estate would be incredibly great. But you got to look for people who've got great judgment.
Yeah.
You understand what I'm talking about? They're, they're in careers or they've done, you know, gone through academia at a level where they've got, you know, great judgment skills. Because there's a lot of pressure that's put on everybody in all these positions, not just city commissioner, county commissioner, state rep.
State, yep.
And, you know, right now, poor people in Portland, poor people in Oregon, but especially Portland, they don't really have anybody who I feel has the, there's nobody right now in, in office right now that has the, the ability to protect poor people in everywhere they need to be, be protected.
So, so, so I even, the G word, if you will, gentrification, is that, is that real or not?
It's real and it's coming to more places in Portland. Because like I said, the problem we have is we got a lot of people moving to Portland and everybody wants their own home. They want their own kitchen, they want their own bathroom, they want their own master bedroom. I'm sorry, they want their own place. You understand? Their own storage place to store their stuff. And the thing is, there's just not enough housing. So what's happening now, like right now, between 300,000 and 400,000, all those homes are going. And I'm looking at 300,000 and $400,000 homes right now that 10 years ago I was selling for 175.
Wow.
Matter of fact, not even 10 years ago, 2012, I was selling for 175. And now they're 300,000 to 400,000, and they're not always the best. But the point is, the monthly payments average between 2,000 and $2,500 a month. And a lot of these houses, which we rented them, they'd rent between 2,000 and 3,000 a month. You see what I mean? So what happens, what I'm worried about is like right now, we've got about, I don't know, about 80 homes on the market between 300,000 and 400,000 in the Portland market, about 80 homes. Now think about it, there's about 80, and people can go on Zillow and rent it themselves for a market the size of Portland. We, you know, you should always have at least 300 or 400 homes in that price range. You know what I mean? But I think in the three-bedroom, oh, say that back, three-bedroom, two-bath, 1500 square foot range, I think we only got about 80 homes or less.
Now, you're sharing this information with us, but at the same time, now again, like we got an election going on, you know what I mean? What's, what's, have you looked at some of the, some of the possibilities that are out there, the folks who are thinking about running for office?
Well, there's nobody that's running for-
And you know, you've got city council.
There's nobody, there's nobody running for city council.
That has any, any background in housing or any-
Well, no, you got Stuart Edmonds, he's an architect.
Yes, Stu, yep.
And Stuart, Stuart's a nice guy. But Stuart has absolutely no concept of cost. I love every design Stuart, you know, produces. I love them. They're built for Beverly Hills. You know, there's no way they can be developed and then you're going to turn around and say, hey, you can live here for $700 a month. No, I mean, Stuart cracks me up. The most expensive, they're beautiful designs.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, they are. They're beautiful designs.
But what about the homeless? I mean, are they going to, you're going to have these so-called A-frames in the back of homes or something like that? I mean, that was proposed by the county, the county commissioners.
Yeah.
$75,000 a pop.
That's not going to work in most of the neighborhoods in inner, in, in inner southeast, inner northern Portland. It could work in some areas that are unincorporated, you know, Multnomah County. Could work maybe out in Gresham and stuff like that in some areas. So, you know, we're not going to see too many A-frames pop up in Portland. I think that's funny, you know? Here we need more housing, higher density, and they're bringing in A-frames. You know, that, that shows you about judgment. You know, I mean, that shows you about judge, you know, judgment. That's like a guy on Valentine's Day or his anniversary deciding to get a gift for his wife and deciding to buy, hey, she likes to unscrew things, I'm going to get a power screwdriver. That way we both can, can work on it.
The funny thing about those A-frames that they were talking about at $75,000 a pop, that was a year ago when that was presented by several of the commissioners. One of the commissioners, I think it was district three or four, something like that. But guess what? I'm still waiting on where I'd be.
Well, the problem is you've got zoning issues and then to prepare the land, $75,000 a pop, just to prepare the land, you're going to throw in another 50 to 60 grand. And that's on top of, we haven't gotten to the permits yet. You understand? So then, it's, like I said, the A-frame idea, I can see it working in some areas of, you know, rural Multnomah County, but in Portland, it's not going to-
Yeah, but a lot of folks, not in my backyard. I mean, a lot of-
Well, there's going to be some of that too.
They've got a bunch of drawing, this, that and the other. And then we got the Wapato that's still sitting around, you know, we're still sitting around.
Well, I keep telling you, Wapato-
I'm very interested in.
Wapato's complicated, Bruce, because I keep telling you, Deborah is worried about Wapato becoming the state hospital.
The state hospital.
I mean, what are you going to do once you put all these mental people who are on our streets in Wapato? Okay, that have mental issues, they need medicine, they need, you know, people watching them. You understand? They need professionals, nurses, doctors. Okay, okay. So when do you kick them out on the street?
Kick them out on the street?
Well, no, what I'm trying to say is, once they get there, they're there.
That's right, that's right.
So eventually, Wapato would turn into-
Remember now, we had damage at one point in time.
I understand. And I bet Deborah would love to have a damage. The problem is, the county doesn't have the budget.
Excuse me, you're getting in our campaign now.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, I love, I love the idea of helping the homeless go to Wapato. It is a brilliant idea.
Good idea.
But it's an idea that has to come from the state level. And I got to tell you something else. We would need our federal congressional people, people like Blumenhauer, people like Wyden, to be all over it.
Well, they got to be.
They got to say, Wyden's got to come in and say, hey, guys, we need a state hospital in Multnomah County and we want you to put it at Wapato.
Yeah, yeah, right, 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 right.
And I'd name it after them. You know what? If, if Wyden did that-
You'd name it after him?
I'd say, change the name of Wapato and call it the State Mental Health Center, Ron Wyden State Mental Health Center. If Ron, if Ron Wyden did that, if he came out with the same passion he used to, 40 years ago, you remember the Gray Panthers?
Oh, I remember that one.
Okay? Ron Wyden should come out and say, I'm going to help Deborah Cefory pay for a state hospital in Multnomah County so we can get mental health people, the, the services they need and get them off our street.
Good, good. Okay, that's another, that's another major, major area, aspect of it.
That would bring jobs.
What about public safety?
About 500 jobs.
You think that's going to be an issue?
Public safety?
For the city races?
Uh, not right now. Not right now, not right now, but I think next year it will.
Okay, okay.
I think next year will.
But what about the races and as far as the number of people that are running for the, as you want, you've got two, two major offices there. You've got two city council seats. One with Fish, right?
Yep.
And then you've got the other with Salzman, right?
Yep.
And you've got a number of people on the other end of it. And then there's this minority entity with Deborah, with Joanne Bowman and Loretta Smith, who's now vacating, vacating the seat, if you will, from, from the county, right? You got me? That's, they say that's going to be an interesting race, very interesting race.
It is.
You've got Stu Edman, you know, he, he basically has the dollars, you know, on the development end of it. And then that's some other-
You know, in city council races, dollars help. It's nice to have good dollars. But we've had a lot of guys get a lot of dollars and get a lot of losses.
That's right.
So now, I, I mean, I got a lot of faith in the people of Portland. People of Portland always pick the good people.
Look like we got to, hey, I tell you what, we're going to do, we're going to shift now and we're going to spend some time with this, this whole issue about campaign finance in the county. At one point in time, I mean, Dan Meese, if you will, got involved and basically capped, if you will.
Meese or Meek?
Meek, Meek.
Meek, Dan Meek.
Yeah, he basically capped. He basically went in and basically got this through and, and so that was sort of in place. And anyway, there's some answers there that we need to deal with. So we've, we've got him on the phone now. We'll have him spend some time with us and share with us basically what it is and then where we are today, okay? Dan, are you on the line?
I'm here, Bruce.
Okay. Hey, put the volume up up here, will you? Put the volume up in the, in the studio here. Okay? Dan, speak up a little, Dan, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can hear you.
How about a little louder, guys? Just a little bit more. Help Fred out, you know, he's a little older than I am. Okay, good. Okay, Dan?
Yes.
Okay, Dan, you're on, buddy. Do us a favor, why don't you just kind of bring us up, sort of define why you did what you did and, and then at the same time, then go into where are we today, okay?
And the subject matter is what?
Subject matter is campaign cap on the, on the county, the 500 above cap thing.
Right. Well, in, in 2016, a group of folks got together and persuaded the Multnomah County Charter Review Committee to place on the ballot a measure to limit campaign contributions in races for Multnomah County office. That would be Multnomah County Commissioners, Sheriff, District Attorney, and Auditor. And the measure would limit contributions to individuals only and, and would ban individual contributions of greater than $500. These are limits that are, are quite common elsewhere in the country. 45 other states have limits on campaign contributions and many cities within those states have even lower limits on campaign contributions. So the voters of Multnomah County approved that measure by 89% yes vote and went into effect on September 1st of last year. And so far, all of the candidates who are running for Multnomah County office are complying with limits. We have folks who check their Orstar accounts, that is their campaign finance report accounts every day to see whether any contributions are coming in that exceed the limits. The other feature of the, of the measure says that if any, if for any reason, a candidate or independent expenditure is being made in amounts, if a candidate is receiving contributions of more than 500 or anyone spends more than 500 on an independent expenditure, then the advertisement funded by those amounts have to identify the source of the funds. 10 states already have laws like this. And it often makes a big difference. The voters of Richmond, California in 2014, when Chevron Corporation was trying to take over the city council by running folks for every seat on the city council plus mayor and financing them to the tune of $3 million in a city of only 100,000 people, California law required that all of their ads say somewhere on it that it was paid for by Chevron. And as a result, all of their candidates overwhelmingly lost, even though they outspent their opponents by about 50 to 1. So that's what the measure was. Now, just, uh, uh, three days ago, the Multnomah County Circuit Court Judge Block decided that all of it is unconstitutional. So under, uh, under the Oregon Constitution, which is really quite amazing when you consider that no court in Oregon has ever held, that a required disclosure of where funds are coming from is unconstitutional in any way. So it's a very shocking decision, but no big deal. It's just the decision of, of one circuit court judge and we will immediately appeal it to the Court of Appeals and ask the Court of Appeals to immediately certify the case to the Oregon Supreme Court so we don't have to, to go through the process, which often takes two years, of getting a decision out of the Court of Appeals. In the meantime, this large coalition of folks, including the Progressive Party and the Green Party and Sierra Club and NAACP and Teamsters and a variety of others, are moving on to enact the same limits for city of Portland races, including the city council, city auditor, et cetera. That measure, we just got a ballot titled for it, Portland City Charter Amendment, and we're now collecting signatures for that. To get involved, anyone can go to honest-elections.com. Honest-elections.com. Get involved, collect signatures. We need 34,000 signatures by the first week of July and then that will be on the ballot in November of this year. And we would expect, this time we're going for 90%. 89% was not good enough. Sorry, this time we're going for a 90% yes vote.
Okay. So Dan, tell me this, what about, what about the present commissioners under, under Cefory and the other commissioners? How did they react, if you will, to this issue?
Some of them expressed, in the campaign, some of them expressed support for the measure. Deborah Cefory did express support for it.
She did, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Once it was adopted, as I say, all the candidates are complying with it. The, the Multnomah County Commission attempted to send this to the courts without taking a position on its constitutionality, but the, the voters objected to that. And, and so the county commission has been fully defending the constitutionality of the measure, which is good. And we've noticed in the campaign finance filings that on a couple of occasions, a candidate, candidate has received a contribution which violates the measure, but in every case, within a day or so, that candidate has returned the contribution. So that it is not, so they don't end up accepting that contribution. So, uh, on the other hand, the city of Portland really needs this. The city of Portland races for mayor and city council are, are becoming extremely expensive. As you may recall, that Charlie Hale spent a million and a half dollars on his campaign for mayor. Ted Wheeler spent over a million dollars in the primary in his campaign for mayor, for their campaigns. And even, and city council races themselves, not for mayor, but for council positions are now often costing half a million dollars. And the money comes from, you know, the special interests. I think Fred has been mentioning some of those, of those special interests, especially the Portland Metropolitan Association of Realtors is a large contribution to, large contributor to city council races. And they typically give contributions on the order of $5,000 to $10,000 or more. Also, many developers and, and financiers are involved in making large contributions. For example, to the Loretta Smith campaign, there are $5,000 contributions from Joshua Carden, Kenneth Starr, Robert Quillan, Portland Metropolitan Association of Realtors, the Leader Capital Group, Comcast, The Standard, which is Standard Insurance Company, Pacific Mark Construction, O'Neil Construction, Nike, Family Care Inc., you know, and a variety of, of other commercial entities. All of those contributions would be illegal if it were a race for Multnomah County Commissioner. But it's currently legal in a race for city, for Portland City Council.
Wow, okay, okay. So, so right now, as, as you say, the, as far as anybody running for office, is that law, do they have to deal with the law, if you will, or can they do whatever they wanted to do?
The, the Multnomah County, candidates for the Multnomah County office can probably do whatever they want to do at this point. The court hasn't issued any injunctions, so technically the law is in effect. But I think anyone who takes a bigger contribution is probably not taking a great risk of being prosecuted.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, okay. Any other points? Any other points you might want to make?
No, he's right. One thing, you know, that makes, um, one of the reasons why our city commission is not as effective as we've had in the past, like I've told people, the last eight years, nine years, we've had the worst city council, probably going back 100 years or more. They're just not good. And the, and the reason they're not good is there's a very limited scope of skills in there. and then on top of that, they don't get along because everybody is trying to, you know, appeal to the developers and everybody else, even Chloe. They're trying to appeal to the developers so they can, you know, stay in office and everything. What I want people to understand is what Dan's talking about, if there was a change in the way city council races were funded, where a lot of the special interests and the extremely rich people who live inside and outside of Portland who have interests to protect, you would see more people join. We would see eventually a better city council because I feel, like I've told you guys, there's a lot of great people in our community, they've got a lot of great skills, a lot of great history, lot of good decision-making. We hear them, we know them, they're our friends, they're our family members. They don't run because it's so expensive to, you know, to run. Not just expensive in money, but in time resources to collect the money in order to run. So, if what Dan's talking about came to city council, I think eventually we'd see a much better city council, a city council like the old days, like a lot of people who've grown up here, the city commissioners of that quality. Right now, I won't mention which one, there's only one person sitting on city council, only one, that deserves to be there. The other ones don't deserve to be there, period.
Um, and Bruce, one thing I would point out is that during our Multnomah County measure campaign, Chloe Udaley was a strong supporter of our measure.
Okay.
We have asked the Portland City Council to refer our measure to voters so that we wouldn't have to go out and collect 30, you know, approximately 50,000 actual signatures. But the Portland City Council has not done that and...
Including Chloe?
That's why we're gonna, pardon me?
Including Chloe?
Well, there hasn't been any formal vote. We just can't get them to...
I got you.
To put it on, to put it on the agenda at all.
In other words, Chloe is not even put, even Chloe, even Chloe is not putting it on, on the agenda. You know, so yeah, she supported it, but how far will she support it?
Yeah, I don't know whether one commissioner can put things on the agenda. Do you know, is that the way it works, Fred?
She can put it on the agenda. I mean, she needs, she needs a second, like any parliamentary thing, but the point is, if she really wanted to make it an issue, even if she didn't have a third vote, vote, she could get somebody to be the second.
Yeah, yeah, she can talk about it. We will ask her. How about that, Dan?
Yeah.
We'll ask her.
Hey, get a commitment that she'll put it on there.
Yeah, we'll make a point to do that piece, okay?
Yeah, make a commitment to put that on there.
Okay. Any other thing, buddy? I want you to announce the fact, how does one access that and get in that petition deal? Is there a phone number or something? You gave an address.
Yeah, the honest-elections.com.
Okay, good.
And as far as a phone number goes, I would give you 503-232-5495.
Okay, fine, fine.
And that's David Dell, whom you know well, I'm sure.
Right, right, exactly. Dan, thank you very, very much, buddy.
Yeah, thank you, Dan.
In fact, Seth's gonna be here next week, we're gonna talk a little bit more about that, okay? Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good.
Bruce, one last thing. Friends, this is a very good idea for our city and I hope you pay attention to it.
Yeah, good. Sounds great. We're gonna take a short break and then we're gonna, we're gonna bring in maybe, I think we may have a candidate in the house, in the count, we're gonna shout out, a shout out for Sharon, 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 Sharon. Oh, oh, there she is. There it is, right there, Maxwell. We'll be right back.
You are watching Oregon Voters Digest. This program can be seen again on these channels on these dates and times. Tell a friend.
All right, folks, we're back again. I'm Bruce Prasarchi, your host, and I've got Fred Stewart here, sitting right here. And again, like I said, he's gonna be joining me and this whole issue of dealing with the leaders and dealing with the campaigns and making sure that the issues are being talked about and making sure we get the best people for the right votes. Am I right?
That is correct.
Well, there she goes. She's already talking already. How about, we got Deborah here, Deborah Harris.
Yes.
She happens to be, she happens to be one of the candidates running for county chair and the present chair is Deborah Kefory. She's there now at this point in time, but we got her in the house and then we're gonna, and again, like I said, we're opening it up to all the candidates, open to all the candidates. So, you just, you just show up or give me a call and we're gonna stick you up and give you, give you some time. We're gonna give you time on an ongoing basis throughout the campaign, as far as I'm concerned. So, what we're gonna do, we got, in fact, we got two candidates in the house at this point in time, we're gonna give, we're gonna give Deborah here about 10 minutes or so and just kinda, you know, just on the front side, let the folks know who you are and where you are and how to go get in touch with you, the campaign with you or whatever, whatever you want to say. And all due respect, and if you can cite specifically maybe one or two items that you feel is really your base of your campaign. Okay, that sounds good?
Thank you.
All right, Deborah.
Thank you very much, Bruce. As Bruce stated, I am Deborah Harris. I lived, I was raised in Arkansas. I've been in Portland and Multnomah County for over 25 years. One of my reasons for running for chair of Multnomah County is that when we see there is a need for change, we sometimes have to step out into the waters and create those changes. Some of the things that I recognize and which we all have as issues are affordable housing, the homeless crisis situation, the elderly, you know, what happens when they retire and they are older and their quality of life, some of those things are. And I also look at the equity and inclusion and disparity side of it. And those are some of the things. Of course, we recognize that those are issues and we recognize that those have been issues all the time. But my purpose for being, running in this race is to find solutions. It's okay to have issues and talk about them. We've talked about issues for years and years and years, but now it's time to find solutions. How do we find solutions? I don't have all of them, no one does. So, what my goal is, is to go out in the communities and the places and the spaces. But first of all, as we all recognize, Multnomah County is a shining county, but the problem is that there are so many places and spaces where that glitter of the county does not glow. So, this is what we need to make happen. One of the ways to make that happen is to have an independent audit. I know we're saying we got these funds, we have federal funds, we subsidize with this and that's great. And the county does have an independent audit done. It has an independent auditor and that firm has been connected with Multnomah County for at least 12 years. So, I'm not, when I, I'm gonna use this term, but please do not take it out of context. When you are connected with someone or if someone has been a part of your life for at least 10 years or five to 10 years, you're going to say this is family. So, I look at that independent audit firm that we have right now as part of the family, not saying that they're related to anyone, so we're not gonna take that out of context. So, sometimes when that happens, if you've been connected for 12 years with an organization, then it is time to assess, you know, are we seeing things through the same lens or through a different lens? I attended the board meeting on Thursday of last week and it was wonderful to hear when the auditors said, you know, everything, well, to make it short, it was a perfect bill of health. Everything was good, everything was good. So, if we're repetitively seeing that the auditors are saying everything is good, then why aren't we seeing the results throughout the county? Why don't we see that glitter and the glow in the lower areas of southeast? Why don't we see it in the northeast areas? Why don't we see it in the home, where the homeless are, sleeping on the streets? Why don't we see it with those mothers and who are working two and three jobs to make ends meet and then the rents go sky high and what they are getting from those three jobs cannot afford the rent that they have? So, where, so where is, what's the problem? So, that's part of my role, is finding solutions. Another concern I have is the ethics, how ethical is our leaders? How ethical are our leaders, the government? Well, specifically, I'm gonna refer to the current chair, Deborah Kefory. There were some instances where she acknowledged that, yes, there are issues going on with the county and she noted in one of the newspapers, and I can cite it if someone wants to know at the end, you'll have my number and email where you can call me and say, where was that cited at? Where she says, well, hold me accountable. And that was lovely, very lovely. But yet, a month later, the same leader, Deborah Kefory, is calling a woman a B. Now, that word is not part of my vocabulary, but it's, the first letter is a B and the other is four of the letters.
I T C H.
Deborah?
Yes.
I know Loretta Smith. She's a friend of mine.
Uh-huh.
She is a bitch sometimes. She is.
Okay, well, this is my part.
I know, but like what she did to Rudy.
Please, this is my part.
Let her make her.
This is my part. Okay, I respect you so much and I appreciate you so much, but I'd like if it's possible, just the opportunity.
I'll shut up.
No, 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 I appreciate you and I appreciate your comments.
But you're making your statement right now. I want to get your piece in first.
Each person has their own perspectives. So, what I'm delivering today is my perspective.
Right, right.
And I respect everybody else's.
No, I respect yours too.
Okay, thank you so much.
But I'm just saying, if somebody knows.
I only have a little time, so you can elaborate on that once I complete, okay?
This is her time right now, this is now, okay.
You're right.
What I'm gonna do right now, remember Maxine Waters, reclaim my time. Reclaim my time. Reclaim my time. Thank you very much.
All right, okay, good. But hey, I want to thank you very much. Like I said, you're gonna be coming here over and over.
Yes.
But this is just a start, gives you an opportunity.
Yes.
And we're doing this purposely because in all due respect, as you, as you know, it's very expensive trying to run, run for office. And I, I want to respect you from the standpoint, you know, you came in at the last minute, I really appreciate the fact.
I call it my faith run.
I think it's, it's an awesome, it's an awesome opportunity. I might add also too, she ran for mayor the last time around.
Yes.
And so, she really got some more experience. So, she's got some darn good experience and some good exposure and we're gonna really have a good race.
So, you don't win, you don't lose, it's win and learn. So, when you learn, that means that you've won.
Very much so.
You're running too.
That's a good point.
I'm glad you're running too.
Thank you very much.
And good luck.
Thank you so much.
We're gonna take a short break, we're just going on the break, we'll just change the chairs, let's go.
All right. Thank you, Bruce.
All right, dear, thank you very much. Okay, as you can see, now we got, we got Sharon Maxwell. Sharon has, Sharon has been in this town for quite some time. She's, she's a small business person.
How you doing, Sharon?
Doing great.
And I happen to know her, she kinda like falls in the same category that I do in the, in the construction trades and business and that, but the bottom line, this is Sharon.
Hi, Bruce.
And she also ran for city council.
That's right, you got over 20,000 votes.
She, I mean, she was out there, she's campaigning, she's a campaigner now. I mean, don't get me wrong, you can't talk about me, I'm just, I'm emceeing right now.
Yes.
Fred's gonna interview me later or something another day.
Okay.
But this is your time.
Yeah.
Let's give her some time right now. Okay, tough.
So, this is Women's Month. Thank you for inviting myself and Ms. Deborah here. Just want to say that I'm native to Portland, I'm a businesswoman, a mother, a grandmother. I know what the issues are right now in District 2. Too many houseless and homeless people. That's unacceptable. I am gonna be that champion and that advocate that's gonna address at the root why the county has allowed this to even happen. They collect the taxes, they know who's in this, in their properties. Why didn't the county be more proactive to stop the folks from losing their homes, being pushed out into the streets, knowing that they have all of the historical information, the feasibility studies? So, as county commissioner for District 2, I'm gonna be out in the district, Fred. I'm gonna be connecting with the business owners, with families, that's my track record. I bring results to the table. As a contractor, as a nonprofit owner, in 2000, I started my own nonprofit, House of Shalom, to provide temporary 30, 60, 90-day housing for people that were being excluded, disabled homeless people, families that were homeless as well, and a youth program that helped to make sure that our young people were graduating from high school, teaching them to connect their education to their career future. In District 2, we have too many of our young people way too disconnected. And so, as county commissioner, I'm gonna be an advocate for them and their families. We need a quality of life for everyone, not just for everyone who sees what's going on in Portland, Oregon, but for the people who were already here. Those dollars that came in from the federal government were for those people. And so, the county commission should be focused on drilling down to the systemic issues that we had, that Deborah cited, that we know already have been here for, for years, really. And so, as county commissioner, I just want to make sure that people have a quality of life.
Okay. I might add also too, that both of these ladies, Deborah and her, are moms.
That's right, that's right.
And they've got kids.
That's right.
Some of them are grown up, you know what I mean?
That's, yes, yes.
The fact of the matter is, they're out there, they're working and they've got kids.
Any grandmothers yet? Any grandmothers?
I'm a grandmother, yeah, yeah. So, a mom and a grandmother. Three, three girls, one boy, three girls, one boy, yeah. And so, the, the thing that really has brought me to running again is because I still have not seen these issues addressed at the core root. When I ran in 2014 for city council, you know, I called out the intellectual dishonesty on the city's part. Now, I'm calling out the intellectual dishonesty on the county's part because the funds have been misdirected. The three areas that I'm gonna focus on as county commissioner are the top three. That's gonna be the mental health piece, the public safety, where the dollars have been focused on the back end of intervention. We need to change the model to focus on prevention. We want to see more people being successful. And then the third one is public health. If we addressed everything upfront, we would see more people having a quality of life. No one wakes up in the morning saying they want to be on a breakdown psychotic or induced by drugs or any of that. People want to have a quality of life and that is the county's full mission, is human services. And right now, they're failing the people.
Well, you know, one of the things I wanted to do real quick, like, is that there are two other candidates, well, actually there are three, I mean, actually there's four of us.
That's right.
I happen to be one also too, but then there, it said, it always talks about the diversity of the panel.
Yes.
But I'm, again, I'm still interested in the fact that, because I am, because I'm very familiar with that area aspect of it.
Right.
Is that, like you said, it has to be about the issues, like Deborah's, it has to be a, and the one, and the bottom line is that we're looking for the leadership that has the type of resume.
That's right.
That can respond to the solutions.
That's right.
Of those issues.
That's right.
And hopefully, that's, we definitely gonna dig in to make sure that the, that all of the candidates.
Yes.
Basically have that, that pre-qualification.
Well, I'm qualified as a candidate. I've been running my construction company for the last 16 years. I've been in construction for the last 25 years. I've ran for-profit and nonprofit. I bring a whole network of businesses, community stakeholders. I am a convener, Fred. I recognize that it's not just about me and it's not because I'm a black woman that I'm gonna focus on just black people or people of color, it's everybody in District 2. I think that's a misnomer that we see in Multnomah County and in the City of Portland, where we are a small percentage, but we are the most desperate impacted by the root causes here. And so, when we do throw our shoe or our hat into the ring, people see, see us only as one sided. I want to let the people of District 2 know that as your county commissioner, I am concerned about all people. I recognize that it takes a village for every one of us. All families matter to me and right now, I want people to really recognize that we need someone who knows the people from District 2, from North Portland and St. John's, all the way out to East Portland to 181st, from the Columbia River down to Burnside. This is, I was born here, I was raised here, I raised my own family here, I'm well-connected and I want to make sure that we're able to work together, bring in all of the different stakeholders and make sure everybody is getting their needs met. But I want to call out to each and every one because people have not been able to seize on their potential, which converts to their purpose. And that's what I'll be doing as county commissioner.
That sounds good. Like I said, we're gonna continue to do this because in all due respect, as you can see, we're gonna have quite an excitement, if you will, talking to the issues and really addressing those issues. And Fred and I are gonna, Fred's gonna be there too, aspect of it. And we're gonna look at these other two candidates.
Right.
Because as you know, we've definitely been there.
Neither one of them have ever run for office.
That's right.
They don't have a track record, no one knows them, but we're both known, you and I, Bruce, you've run at least 20 times, right?
Fifty times.
But there's a, there's wisdom there, see?
Exactly.
There's wisdom, that's the key about that whole piece because you got the...
And I appreciate that.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? So, my point is that, you're right, I appreciate the fact that, like you said, you ran and you learned something as you ran.
Yes, I have, yes, I have.
And because of the kind of monetary situation that you're normally have to face with when you're running for office.
Right.
That's why we're doing what I'm doing.
Yes.
That's why I'm part of the process.
Yes.
Because I know how hard it is and I know why it's so important, if you will, to have the background necessary.
Right.
To respond to the issues that are out there that we're facing.
I like the fact that you talked about the campaign finance because that also addresses, especially for grassroots candidates as ourselves, that where we don't get that big, those big checks written, but for the ones who do, it puts us all at a disadvantage. So, to get smaller contributions works a lot better for everyday working people and that's who I'll be the commissioner's strong advocate for, is everyday working families who are struggling right now.
Harris, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks very much, Bora, appreciate that very much. Good luck, knock on some more doors.
Yes.
Okay, good enough, okay, good. Well, Fred, what do you think? Let's put this chair, okay, we'll, we'll just keep it right there, okay, good, good, good. Well, first off, let's talk about the, um, the campaign finance kind of concept, the cap, you know? I think Dan basically brought out the issue from the standpoint of the rationale.
Dan's a hundred percent right. I mean, I, I, like I said earlier, um, we don't have enough people, I, I mean, I talk politics on my Facebook, I talk politics with my clients, and I, there's so many people on my Facebook I, I talk to and other places, they've got the reasoning and the passion, they've got the knowledge, they've got everything but the moolah, you know what I'm saying? There's a lot of people in this town.
But you still, we still want big business to participate, that's very important.
We want them to participate, but we want the people first.
A lot of times they create jobs, you gotta create jobs, you gotta create some jobs.
Correct. You know how, you know how big business can participate? They can put together forums and put all the candidates on the, you know, in front.
Yeah, right here, right here, yeah.
Yeah.
At Open Signal.
And, well, they can do...
Like we're doing it right now.
If some developer wants to really help the process, if there are realtors who I've been a member of since nineteen eighty-eight wanted to help the process, put on forums, public forums, and webcast them, and let everybody learn more about everybody who's running for office, you know? And they, and there's nothing wrong with them saying, well, I'm gonna let you know about everybody, but that one on the right, I really like, there's nothing wrong with that. But they wanna help, but the thing is, we gotta do something to where we can get more people involved in Portland while we got a lot of these changes. Because the reason why the, the Portland City Council, right now, is so poor in addressing the issues of the people of Portland, they, they, they're not held accountable for basically making decisions that are not based on the values that got them there. You understand what I'm talking about? The shared values of the people of Portland. We're no longer a city that's making decisions currently or for the future that are progressive. We're not. We're not the progressive city that people moved here for. We're not, we're not that city anymore. And, uh, if we're gonna get that direction, we need more people with progressive thinking running for office. And a lot of these people, they've had careers, they've been going to getting education, experiences, traveling the world, working with a Peace Corps, they've been doing all these things to make them effective contributors to this city. They've not been out developing a fortune or kissing the butt of people who've got fortunes, you know? We need those people to start running for office.
Yeah, well, in all due respect, that's why we're doing what we're doing.
Yeah.
And that's why, that's why we're doing it here at Open Signal, and thank, thank Open Signal for doing such because we're the only one in town.
Correct.
To do the right debate.
Correct.
Because you can't do anything, you can't do a debate in three minutes.
Yeah, we should do, we should do some debates.
You can't do the, the one minute deal or the three minute deal. I've, I've, I've been through all this process, and that's one of the reasons why I feel that the format that we're gonna be holding on here at Oregon Voters Digest is gonna be of benefit to the, uh, to the public at large, to the voters at large, and to our way of life.
Yeah.
And I think that's a very, very important piece.
Well, I appreciate everybody that's running, uh, for office right now, and I, and I think we should do, and I wish you great luck, Bruce, straight up, I like Sharon and Deborah is okay, but I'm definitely supporting you, I want you to run, I want you to win.
But like I said, that's why I have you here, I mean, I realize I'm running, but the fact of the matter is, I still, we still need to interview these folks.
Yeah.
And talk about the issues.
And I like that you're doing that, you're bringing them on your show.
Oh, yes.
You're letting people know about them, I mean, Sharon's a great person, I've only met Deborah three or four times, she's always been a great person, uh, everything I've ever heard about her has always been positive and strong.
I've seen on the campaign trail.
Yeah, I mean, I've never heard a, a bad word about her, I mean, I really don't know much about her, but everybody that I know that knows her, they like her a lot, they got a lot of faith in her.
And like I said, we got, we got these other candidates gonna be coming on too, and we got, we got a, we got a lady from, from India, running for county, and we also have a Hispanic lady by the name of Maria, and they've been out on the campaign trail, and so hopefully we'll be able to get some more insight. And when it gets down to me, you'll be interviewing me.
Oh, good.
Very simple, and then we'll interview everybody else, okay?
Yeah.
Folks, tune in, here we go about, we got about thirty seconds here at this point in time. Hopefully you like what we're doing, and please tell your neighbors to, to share with us, to view with us, because when you get your voters' pamphlet, this is just an addition. Now you have the opportunity to visually see these individuals and see them express themselves. But we're gonna be basically making sure, we gotta, we're gonna be talking about specifics. What specifically, what do you bring to the table? It's one thing to talk about it, it's one thing to PR about it, but what have you done specifically, the fact that you can, in fact, respond to the issues that we're talking to that we need, okay? With that, thank you very much, see you next week, have a good one. Hey, folks, I'm Bruce Prissard, and as you might know, I'm running to be your next county commissioner, but I will continue to host our Oregon Voters Digest and will likely share my views on important issues here. And since this is going to be a very important election year for everyone, I'm opening this platform for other political candidates to share their views too. So, if whether you're also running for a Multnomah County Commissioner, or if you are going to be on the ballot in any other position in our viewing area, you are welcome to come on this show and tell us of what you are all about. This is an open invitation to anyone running for any office in the Portland area. We broadcast our show live every Sunday afternoon here in northeast Portland and would love to share the stage with you. If you're interested, send us an email at O V D guests at gmail dot com. The email should be displayed on your screen now. So, come on down, write me an email and tell me who you are, what position you're running